Maybe we can get the volume turned down on our Christmas carols. I hate to break up a good thing, but I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. It is Monday, December 12th, 2022, and the time is 6:00 PM. This regular meeting of the Mesquite ISD Board of Trustees is called to order. A quorum is present, and notice of the meeting has been posted for the time and manner required by law. At this time, the Board of Trustees will go into a closed meeting under authority of Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, which is consultation with the board's attorney, and Section 551.074 under personnel. No formal action will be taken in closed meeting, and we will return here shortly. The time is now 6:27 PM. It's Monday, December 12th, 2022, and the Board of Trustees will now reconvene in open meeting. We'd like to welcome everyone here. We're glad that you're here this evening. Tonight, we have with us Fred Bacon, who is the pastor of First Christian Church that will offer our in-vocation, and we have a group of students from Gentry Elementary that will lead us in the pledges of allegiance. So at this time, if you'd like, please stand with us for the prayer and the pledges of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let's pray. Gracious Father, we are grateful for Mesquite and for the homes that we share here, and for the life that we live here, and for the schools that work so hard to provide an education to our students. We ask your blessing upon every teacher, every administrator, Father, everyone who serves on this Board of Trustees. We pray for wisdom, and insight, and blessing. We thank you for your love and your grace on us, especially at this Christmas season. And we ask it all in the name of our Savior, Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
My name is Benedict, and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Jayden, and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is David, and I'm in fifth grade.
Good job. Thank you very much. At this time, we have a special treat here in this Christmas season. The West Mesquite High School Wrangler Choir, under the direction of Ms. Anna Peoples, is here, and they are going to perform some different songs for us. So, welcome.
Frosty! Frosty boy! You're the snowman! Yo, Frosty! Frosty the snowman was a chubby, cuppy soul With a cornrow plaid and a buzzed nose And two eyes made out of coal. Frosty the snowman was a fairy tale they say He was made of snow, but the children know How he came to life one day. There must have been some magic in that old silk hat they found For when they placed it on his head. He began to dance around, round, dance around, dance all around. Round, round, dance around, dance all around. Round, round, dance around, dance all around. Round, round, dance around, dance all around. Oh, Frosty the snowman was alive as he could be And the children say he could laugh and play Just the same as you and me. Oh, go Frosty, go! Dance high and low. He is cool now, no fool now Look at the snowman's nose. That's forty below. A real time of old. Stay for now, let's run now Before he has to go. There must have been some magic in that old silk hat they found For when they placed it on his head. He began to dance around, round, dance around, dance all around. Round, round, dance around, dance all around. Round, round, dance around, dance all around. Round, round, dance around, dance all around. Oh, Frosty the snowman was alive as he could be And the children say he could laugh and play Just the same as you and me. Frosty! Frosty boy! You're the snowman! Oh, when the years are slow. Yo, Frosty!
Mister Frost, I feel as though I know you So you'll mind if I should get familiar with you. Santa baby, just slip my stable under the tree for me Been an awful good girl, Santa baby, so hurry down the chimney tonight. Santa baby, I've fixed you for the purple too, I blew. I'll wait up for you, dear Santa baby, so hurry down the chimney tonight. Think of all the fun I missed, think of all the bells that had been kissed. Next year I could be just as good If you check off my Christmas list. Santa baby, I want you on a really nice night. Little angel, oh you, Santa baby, so hurry down the chimney tonight. Santa honey, one little thing I really do need, a tea To the platinum pipe, Santa honey, so hurry down the chimney tonight. Santa cutie, I'm filling my stocking with a pink dress and jacks. Sign your X on the line, Santa cutie, so hurry down the chimney tonight. All the children of my Christmas tree We left some decorations, but I didn't buy these. I really do believe in you, but see if you believe in me. Santa baby, for the best of presents, one little thing I need. I don't beat on the phone, Santa baby, so hurry down the chimney tonight. So, Santa, hurry down the chimney tonight, Santa baby, hurry down the chimney tonight. Santa honey, hurry down the chimney tonight. Santa cutie, hurry down the chimney tonight.
I was following the, I was following the, I was following the, I was following the, I was following the pack, all swallowed in their coats With scars of red tied round their throats To keep their little heads from falling in the snow. And I turned round and there you go, and my boy you would fall. And turn the white snow red as strawberries in the summertime. I was following the pack, all swallowed in their coats With scars of red tied round their throats To keep their little heads from falling in the snow. And I turned round and there you go, and my boy you would fall. And turn the white snow red as strawberries in the summertime. I was following the pack, all swallowed in their coats With scars of red tied round their throats To keep their little heads from falling in the snow. And I turned round and there you go, and my boy you would fall. And turn the white snow red as strawberries in the summertime. Just give us a sleigh, we'll sing a little, bring the tingle in too. Come on, it's lovely weather, boys, stay right together with you.
Outside it's snowing, friends are calling you. Come on, it's lovely weather, boys, stay right together with you.
Giddyup, 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 let's go, let's look at the show. We're riding in a wonderland of snow. Giddyup, 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 it's grand, just hold your hand. We're riding along the song, we're whispering very loud. Our cheeks are nice and rosy and comfy, cozy are we? We're snuggled up together like two birds of a feather would be. And sing the roving horse and sing the horse or two. Come on, it's lovely weather, boys, stay right together with you. It's a birthday party at the home of the farmer grave. It'll be the perfect ending of a perfect day. Sing the song we love to sing, the dancing will sound.
And what a dream, what a change of life.
Oh, come on, there's a happy feeling, nothing in the world can hide. Put your hats around the coffee and the pumpkin pies. It'll really be like a picture print, a courier and guys. These are the things that make you remember our lives. Just give us a sleigh, we'll sing a little, bring the tingle in too. Come on, it's lovely weather, boys, stay right together with you.
Outside it's snowing, friends are calling you. Come on, it's lovely weather, boys, stay right together with you.
Giddyup, 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 let's go, let's look at the show. We're riding in a wonderland of snow. Giddyup, 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 it's grand, just hold your hand. We're riding along the song, we're whispering very loud. Our cheeks are nice and rosy and comfy, cozy are we? We're snuggled up together like two birds of a feather would be. And sing the roving horse and sing the horse or two. Come on, it's lovely weather now, lovely weather now. Boys, stay right with you.
Wow, that was quite a show, wasn't it, y'all? Thank you. Thank you so much to the Wrangler Choir from West Mesquite High School. I know there's a principal back there. Karen Morris is very proud of you students. I know your moms and dads are proud of you, too. Thank you so much for entertaining us tonight. The next item on our agenda is under the Board moment. Board, do you have anything? Is anyone here from the PTA this evening? Come on forward. Welcome.
Thank you. Greetings. The update for the Mesquite Council of PTAs is that our current membership is at 3,616 members, and our council has also achieved the requirements for good standing with the State of Texas and Texas PTA. And today, I did bring a pile of Angel memberships. I know that some were requested for the board. I'll leave them with Dr. Leslie Feinglass. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is owner, student, and staff guess. Ms. Jobe?
...this evening. We're going to begin by recognizing Bethany Bach from McDonald Middle School. She is a seventh and eighth grade math teacher, and we have a video to introduce her to you.
Ms. Bach is the most amazing teacher that you could possibly have on campus. She not only exemplifies everything it means to be a Mustang, but everything it means to be a teacher in general. She is selfish, she's a team player, she's always doing whatever she can to make other people's lives better, whether it's covering classes, working with kids, coming up with lessons. She is just the quintessential team player. She loves her students. She spends countless hours working with them and coming up with lessons and working with others, and she always puts them first. And everyone loves her. She is just a very popular person on campus because she is just everything you want a teacher to be and everything you want a colleague to be. So, we are very thankful for Ms. Bach.
I think teaching is important because I think all children should have the opportunity to feel successful and empowered and important. I want my students to leave this classroom as lifelong learners, but I also want to teach them how to be the best versions of themselves so that they can be successful and happy in life.
Whereas the Mesquite Independent School District Board of Trustees seeks to honor outstanding classroom teachers who demonstrate leadership, innovation, and dedication to the students of Mesquite ISD, and whereas the Mesquite ISD Apple Corps consists of exceptional teachers nominated by their peers to receive the school district's highest recognition. Therefore, be it resolved that the board officially welcomes Bethany Bach into the Mesquite ISD Apple Corps on this 12th day of December, 2022. Thank you very much.
I got a secret hiding spot. Not so secret anymore, I guess. All right, I wanted to thank my peers for nominating me for this award. It really means a lot that they recognize and see how hard that I work. Each day, I have the opportunity to make a difference in someone's life. I get to push students past what they think they can't do and help them become the best versions of themselves. Every moment with them matters. Every smile matters. Every greeting in the hall matters. Every time I remind them that we aren't on winter break yet, so there is still an opportunity to learn more math, matters, and I love what I do. Thank you to my McDonald family, who was always there to help me through ideas, to help me talk through ideas, brainstorm, and problem solve, so I can do what is best for our students. There's several of them here, so thank you. Thank you to my husband for only occasionally commenting on the number of Amazon packages that come to our house just to be taken to school for my students, for always being there to help me celebrate the great days, being my sounding board for the not-so-great days, and reminding me that laughing at myself is the best way to get through it all. And thank you to my parents, also in the back, who taught me the value of a good education and the importance of helping others, to my sister, who always laughs at me when I deserve it, but reassures me when I need it, and my in-laws, who have always been supportive and encouraging. Thank you all.
Ms. Bach, if you will, ask your family to stand so we can recognize them.
They really don't want that, but... There's my husband, my parents are in the back, my in-laws.
And then, any students or staff from McDonald that are here?
Yes. I have, I have, yes, all my principals and two of my special IT members who are amazing. I couldn't do any of this without them.
Thank you.
Our next honoree this evening is Shawna Brown from Mesquite Academy. She's an actuarial English teacher, and this is her 28th year of teaching.
Mrs. Shawna Brown has been a great team member here at Mesquite Academy. She has always been positive and very nurturing to our staff members, which is why they voted for her for this award. And Mrs. Brown also builds great relationships with the students. They can always go to her when they're having any issues. Everything that we try to push out to the students, she represents 100% here at Mesquite Academy. Congratulations to Ms. Shawna Brown for receiving this month's Apple Corps Award.
I think of teaching as a ministry. I feel like we have been chosen for this position, and since we have been chosen for this position, that we need to make sure that we do all that we can do to make sure that the task is completed. It is definitely an honor to have the opportunity to be a teacher, to have the opportunity to teach our students, and to have the opportunity to teach in a great school district like Mesquite ISD.
Whereas Mesquite Independent School Board of Trustees seeks to honor outstanding classroom teachers who demonstrate leadership, innovation, and dedication to the students of MISD, and whereas the MISD Apple Corps consists of exceptional teachers nominated by their peers to receive the school district's highest recognition. Therefore, be it resolved that the board officially welcomes Shawna Brown into the Mesquite ISD Mesquite ISD Apple Corps on this 12th day of December 2022. Welcome.
Good evening. It is definitely and truly a blessing to be honored. First, I would like to give honor to my God, who is the head of my life, and for choosing me for this ministry of education, because as I said, it is definitely a ministry, and a ministry that we are to complete according to His will and not our own. Secondly, I would like to thank my family who is watching me via Facebook Live, my parents who are in Louisiana, and my father who's in Irving, Texas, my husband who's just snuck in. Praise God he was able to get off of work. My son Jalen, who's a 2016 graduate of Horn High School, and my son Jerian, who's now serving our country in the United States Army, and who is a 2019 graduate of West Mesquite High School, my other son Xavier, and all of my siblings. Next, I would like to acknowledge and thank my principal in his absence, my assistant principal, Mrs. Adenahy. Thank you so much for your support. My friends, and especially those who are here, Deidre Frazier, Angela Dormand, Summer Futro, Tamika Turner, Michael Turner, Maya Starland, and Jayla Starland, and anyone else I probably didn't see. It is truly a blessing to be honored tonight, and I would be forever grateful for this honor. Thank you, guys, so much.
Ms. Brown, we see your husband standing back there. We'll acknowledge him now. And then, any staff member at the academy, if you're here, please stand. Ms. Bach and Ms. Brown, congratulations. We appreciate so much what you do for us each day, and we're successful in Mesquite ISD because of good teachers like each of you, so thank you very much.
All right. Every month, we also recognize a star para-professional, and our star para this month is from Austin Elementary School. I'm going to ask Dr. Royal to come forward and introduce us to her.
Debbie Buchanan has worked with me for over 16 years. During this time, we worked together at Canada Elementary and now Austin Elementary. Many who know her know that she has the answers to most questions. Most things are completed prior to my request. As a new principal, she saved me from numerous situations involving money and policy. She is one of the smartest people I know, and she never forgets. Everywhere she goes, she leaves a lasting impression on those with whom she works. Since she began with Mesquite ISD on August 12, 1993, Debbie has worked at McQuarter, Moss, Canada, and now Austin. She starts my day with a quick conversation where we solve all of the world's problems, and then we plan for the rest of the week. She knows me well, and many times, she will finish my sentences. She really does know what you're thinking. Everyone needs a Debbie in their lives. I'm so privileged to announce that Debbie Buchanan is our star para.
All right, now it's time to recognize some students. So the following students were selected as winners of MISD's Holiday Card Contest, and the contest is open to all elementary students this year, and these three were chosen as having the best designs. So they're going to receive a Christmas ornament with their designs on them later this week. All right, our first-place winner is Athena Ross from Galloway Elementary School. And her art teacher Tiffany Dixon is with her. Our second-place winner is Gala Espinoza from Canada Elementary School. And her teacher is Janie Shore. And our third-place winner this year is Liliana Ramirez from Austin Elementary. Continuing with the fine arts, the following bands received a superior division rating at the UIL Regional Marching Band Contest and advancement to UIL Area C Marching Contest. POTHE placed second overall, and NORTH placed fourth overall, and tonight, these bands are represented by their directors and drum majors. So please welcome Todd Burke from John Horn High School. Next, welcome Lance Plisowski from Mesquite High School. Representing POTHE High School, we have Tish Downs, Steve Caff, Benjamin Brown, and Christian Sawyer. And representing North Mesquite High School, we have Scott Reeves and several of his students. And now welcome Jennifer Borders and her students from West Mesquite High School. All right, the following students qualified for the national competition for Team Hair and Makeup from the Texas Thesbian State Festival. From Mesquite High School, we have Sophia Agiri, national champion for Team Hair and Makeup. And Deja Sherwood from Mesquite High School, national competition for Team Hair and Makeup. All right. The following students received an excellent rating for their Texas Thesbian State Festival. From Mesquite High School, we have Alex Turner, duet musical theater performance, and Anna Hernandez, duet musical theater performance. And let's welcome Sophia Agiri back one more time. She qualified for the national competition for individual monologue performance from the Texas Thesbian State Festival. Now, please welcome the volleyball team from John Horn High School. They were District 10 6A area volleyball finalists. Their coach, Tonique Cotry. From John Horn High School, please welcome Justin Underwood and Ricky Coleman, members of the football team from District 10 6A, bi-district qualifiers, and Courtney Allen is their coach. From North Mesquite High School, please recognize from the volleyball team Tanaya Antwine and Cora Hurst, and their coach is Larry Lehman. And next, from West Mesquite High School is Liliana Cruz, TSHTSCA, 2022 volleyball second-team academic all-state. Also from West Mesquite High School, Ladea Daniels, the Texas High School Coaches Association's 2022 volleyball second-team academic all-state. Next is the volleyball team from West Mesquite High School, District 12 5A, bi-district qualifier and finalist, and the coach is Charlene McKibben. And we have one more recognition for our fine arts students for one-act play achievements, and we have a video from the fine arts department to recognize these students. And I believe we have one more recognition tonight for our replay talk partner, and we have a video to introduce that partner to you.
This month, we are recognizing Credit Union of Texas as our featured Read Play Talk community partner. Today, we're at Floyd Elementary, where Credit Union of Texas is sponsoring a free book fair that's put on by one of our other community partners, Book Drive for Kids.
What the kids do is they get to come in, have a quick little talk to them about book ownership and about what we're going to do. Here, we're going to get how many books? One! And so they get to come into the book fair, select a brand-new book for them to take home. They get to pick their own book. Then we have book plates where they put their name on it, and so we really cement the idea of book ownership and how you have books that are yours that you take home. And then we have other books that have been donated that are used, so we have a bonus table, they get to get a used book.
I remember Scholastic would come to the school once a year and do a book fair, and I was excited, but unfortunately, I wasn't in the financial position to really take it full advantage of it the way I wanted to. And I remember getting the little pamphlet and circling all the books that I wanted. Now, a million folds later, being in a position to be behind a great cause like this and be a part of something that's going to help people, I take a personal pride. I'm aligned with a company that believes in the community and believes in our scholars.
We're appreciative of Credit Union of Texas' support of Replay Talk, and we hope that their generosity inspires other local businesses to sponsor free book fairs for more of our students in the future.
Congratulations to all that were recognized during our student and staff guess. Appreciate you so much. Next item on the agenda is under our consent agenda. We have a motion by Mr. Carbo and a second by Ms. Whitlock to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next item is audience portion. If you would like to address this board regarding an item that is on our posted agenda, we'll hear from you at this time. Okay. We'll move to reports of the superintendent. We have... No, we're not taking a break. If everybody wants to take a break, we can. Okay. Dr. Rivera has something he'd like to say.
Yeah, before the break, right? So, good evening, everybody. One of the joys and privileges of working in school leadership is that you get the opportunity to share time, and a lot of time, with your executive team. And tonight, I want to recognize one person. This is his last board meeting with us, Mr. Mike Hassel. Mr. Mike Hassel's been with us for a year and a half, and he serves in two different cabinet-level positions, but don't let it fool you, time does not equate to effectiveness. And I know many people that have worked with Mr. Hassel, and his professionalism, dedication to his job, is unmatched. So I want to say, Mike, thank you for having spent time with us, effective time. We will miss you. You're still a family member, and we wish you well. He's getting a promotion. He's going to be the chief of staff for Richardson ISD, so now that we trained him well, we'll send him back.
Okay, before we go any further, I've been requested to take a break, so we'll take about a seven-minute break. so we'll take about a seven-minute break. Okay, the time is now 7:21. We will reconvene from our short break. And next item on the agenda, yeah, we're going to hear a report under Safety and Security from Mr. Taylor Morris. And I don't see Mr. Washington, but we'll hear from Mr. Morris.
So, thanks for the time to share with you all tonight. And, you know, there's a lot that goes into safety and security. You know, it's much broader than just keeping bad things from happening inside of our campuses or in our buildings, security measures, health services, additional personnel, anti-bullying lessons, our code of conduct. All of these are pieces of safety and security, but they're not all of it. So tonight, I was just going to go through several things that are part of the layers of safety and security we have in our schools. So what does it entail? What are some of the things it entails? You know, gone are the days where you walk up to any entrance in our building, and there's a big sticker on the door that says, you know, "Come on in, but make sure you go check in in the office whenever you get here." You know, our doors are locked. We usually have one campus for visitors, or one entrance for visitors to come in. You know, I think back to what it looked like at airports before 9/11 and how quick things changed after 9/11. And it's been a slower roll in schools, but you're seeing some of the repercussions of the things that have gone on in our country and in our state to what we do at our schools. But hardening of facilities is really what a lot of people think of. When you think of safety and security, that's what most people go to, is hardening of our facilities. So it means limiting campus access points for arrival. So campuses might have one drop-off area in the back, one drop-off area in the front. And so, you know, all the kids enter from those places. You have personnel at those entrances to ensure that the people coming in are the people that are supposed to be coming in. Vestibles that we've had since around 2018 that have door controls so that visitors are buzzed into an office area when they get there, and they don't just get to walk directly into the building. Visitor procedures and scanning IDs to make sure they're okay to be on our campuses. Other examples to harden campus might include fencing, wearing IDs, and surveillance systems. But ultimately, we want to have a layered approach to help ensure those that are in our building are supposed to be there. Emergency operations planning, it's another piece of safety and security. There's a lot to this, and there are plans for almost every situation that we could encounter: water leaks, bomb threats, tornadoes, active shooters, electricity outages, reunification. We have a continuity of operations plan as well in the event that one of our buildings becomes irreparable, they're in a state of repair, and we can't have school there. Annually, we submit these plans to the Texas School Safety Center. They give us feedback, and we adjust them as necessary. Additionally, it's important to note that our partnership with the city and their emergency operations team is healthy and collaborative. We've had several meetings over the past several years to address varied scenarios and what response, what the response would be from us as a district and from them as a city. The standard response protocol, safety and security covers this, and it talks about lockdowns, it talks about secures, holds, evacuations, and shelters. We adopted this, one thing I'm proud to say, in Mesquite ISD, we adopted this in 2018, and we've used their language ever since then. On top of that, the Mesquite Police Department uses the same language. We think it's important that when we communicate regarding stuff that's going on in our schools, it's consistent and it's accurate and clear. One of the things that's important to note about standard response protocol, I was on a Zoom with the new TEA Director of Safety and Security, and he basically told us that the state was going to require that in the next legislative session, that every school district in the state of Texas would adopt the SRP, which is something that we've had here for almost five years now. So along with that, our staff and students do a lot of training to prepare themselves for emergency situations. We know that if we practice and train on these things, then if something has to happen and we have to use them, then we're going to be good and potentially save lives. We just talked about the SRP. We drill all of these protocols twice a year, and for evacuation, we do that once every single month that kids are in the building. All of our UL sponsors and several other sponsors, including those in our career and technology programs, are Stop the Bleed and CPR certified. I always love to share that our bus drivers are some of the most trained individuals in our organization. They're not only CDL certified in all the training they do behind the wheel, but they're also CPR certified. They're certified in the use of AEDs, trained in trauma-informed care, and for what to do when students are in mental health crises. Next thing, another safety measure we have in place is our P3 anonymous tip line. This was presented to us, it's a neat story, about five years ago by a group of SROs. Our method of anonymous reporting before this was, a lot of times, just a crime stopper's line. It was different at every campus. Sometimes it was just the SRO's office phone number, but there was no consistency across campus, and they wanted that consistency. So they actually brought this to us. It's called P3, and over the years, we've seen it utilized by parents, students, and community members. And regardless of the issue, we feel that this platform gives our stakeholders an opportunity to share their concerns when we don't know, when they don't know who to share it with, and if they want to keep their names out of it. District Safety and Security Committee is another component of school safety, and it was brought about in about 2018. This committee consists of parents, community members, fire department, police officers from several municipalities, city emergency operations. Some of you all are on this committee, and campus and district-level staff. The committee reviews all the submissions that go to the Texas School Safety Center. They discuss findings or the lack thereof from a random intruder audits new this year. They discuss security measures that we've put in place, and ultimately, they help inform the district about best practices from their lens and their current role. You know, it's different, somebody that works in fire might look at safety and security in a different way than a campus administrator or a teacher. So it's important to hear those varied perspectives, because they're going to impact a lot more than just the people in that room. That perspective is important when looking at our Safe and Supportive Schools program. This is part of Chapter 37 of the Texas Education Code, and it was part of Senate Bill 11 a few sessions ago. We've established district-level teams and trained campus-level teams. One of the roles of this team is to look at certain threatening behaviors exhibited by students and to discuss supports that can be put in place to prevent any of those behaviors from happening again. The perspective I mentioned before is important here in that we should not look at the behavior from only the lens of a campus administrator or the campus SRO or the campus counselor, because how each of us see an incident is going to be different, and the next steps is going to be different. So the team is made up of people with expertise in counseling, behavior management, mental health, substance abuse, classroom instruction, special education, and law enforcement. Ultimately, the Safe and Supportive Schools program is just another layer of support for our students and our campuses. And the last category is mental health. I'm really proud of the work that Kristi Davis and Kim Edwards, before her, have done in our counseling department and what they've done in this arena, and I'm going to highlight some of those with you next. So the mental health supports. The first thing is T-Chat. T-Chat is Texas Child Health Access Through Telemedicine. And it was something that was brought about by the state in 2019 to address some of the needs in our schools, especially with schools that didn't have access to mental health supports. They offer four virtual visits with a licensed clinician. They push out community referrals in some of the bigger cases. And when clinically necessary, they might give a referral for psychiatric consults or medical evaluations. All referrals include a case management piece, so there's ongoing support through the process. And we currently have eight campuses receiving support from T-Chat, and they're making virtual appointments that are available at those campuses to students that may not be able to receive help otherwise. Regarding on-campus supports, school counselors, we have certified school counselors in every one of our buildings that are trained in a plethora of things, including behavior supports, mental health supports, trauma-informed care, and others. We have intervention counselors, which are licensed professional counselors or licensed social workers that are, we have, two of our elementaries have intervention counselors, four of our middle schools, all of our high schools, including the Mesquite Academy and the Learning Center, have these intervention counselors. We have green spaces in every classroom, I think somebody mentioned that earlier today, for students to practice emotional regulation. Teachers have been given manipulatives and strategies to help with these spaces. And also, there are 20 of our 53 campuses that have found space within their building to have social-emotional learning rooms for students and teachers to use when they need a calming place to go. Finally, all campuses are provided with social-emotional learning character curriculum through LeadWorthy and RethinkEd. These are used during advisory periods, in small groups, or in one-on-one meetings with counselors and administrators. Additionally, we are constantly adding things to these resources so that teachers, counselors, and administrators have all the tools that they need right at their fingertips. Next thing is the care clinic, and most of y'all have heard a little bit about the care clinic over the years. The care clinic is done in partnership with Texas A&amp;M Commerce. We have 26 LPCs and counseling interns that see students, families, and teachers at the care clinic, and it's all free of charge. We also have four full-time therapists, including two play therapists, that work with students. We can currently see over 300 clients a month at no cost to any of these clients. And with added personnel and the assistance from Texas A&amp;M University Commerce, our waiting list this year is a fraction of what it was last year. We had waiting lists last year that were in the triple digits at some points. About a month ago, we were looking into that, and the waiting list was less than 25. And so we're in much better shape than we have been in years past. And the last thing is care facilitators, and this is something that's been funded through ESER. It's been added since we've had ESER funds, and it consists of fully licensed counselors or LPCs that travel to campuses and provide services to students and staff. Often, we've found that some parents or families aren't able to make it to the care clinic in the evenings, and so this is a way that we can intervene and we can provide that support on the campus. And so having these facilitators mobile made counseling services available for when parents couldn't bring them to the care clinic. And it also expanded the availability of appointments for our staff, because that's another piece that's missing from this, is our staff is seen by the care clinic as well. But I can't understate the importance of this work. When I've attended safety conferences over the past several years, the message is always the same. We can have 1,000 rules in place and processes and procedures, but none of that's going to work unless we invest our time addressing the needs of our people and their mental health and their mental capacity. The last thing I'm going to talk to you about is looking in the future, and so, and to see what we've done this year. So this year, exterior door checks. You know that we're checking our exterior doors four times a day on our campuses to ensure that they're locked, shut, and functioning properly. You've heard about the random intruder audits. We've had visitors from the Texas School Safety Center in Region 10 that have come out and visited our campus to ensure that our campuses are hardened, they're locked and secured. We've extended our partnerships with Mesquite Police Department. And so, post-Ivaldi, you know, we met with the police this summer, and every police officer, every patrol officer, every single person that works a beat in Mesquite Police Department has a FOB to our buildings, and they can access our buildings in the event of a crisis without having to find a key or find an unlocked door. And then we completed the security audit through True North Consulting Group this past year and prioritized our next step, some of which are listed next. But continued expansion of our counseling services, it's needed. Vestibles upgrades, we're looking at video intercoms at every one of our campuses for people to use when they come to our building. Exterior doors and door controls, we're looking at technology that would be on our exterior doors that would notify us when a door is unlocked or open so that we can address those immediately and not have to wait when we're manually checking those doors. Emergency management systems, so at our fingertips, we can put a school on lockdown, we can put a school on secure, we can pull the fire alarm, per se, on an app when we're needed without having to go find a place to do that. And then a Director of Safety and Security, which we're actively seeking and hope that their sole purpose is now going to be on safety and security. So that is safety and security in a nutshell. Again, that's not an exhaustive list, but it is some of the very layers that we have in place to help our buildings and help our campuses and our students. And I can take questions at this time.
Thank you for all that you did. I know it's demanding, but you guys have done a really good job, so thank you very much.
There's a lot of work to do, and I tell people as often as I-- Yeah, they're good people. I tell people a lot, though, that safety and security, I don't think you can ever be satisfied with it. So you're just constantly looking to roll the ball forward and to the next best thing. And again, you want those layers, you want, you know, you want as many impediments as you can, and you want the preventative measures, but you also want the responsive measures that come after a crisis, because we know that there's going to be crises, and you hope those crises are limited, and you hope that you have plans in place to limit their impacts, so.
One of the things that we're good at is getting ahead of the game on a lot of this and knowing that a lot of this, with the doors and the stuff, is mindset, it's habits, breaking bad habits. Do you foresee the state going forward requiring some additions to our curriculum as far as safety and security measures, especially at the younger grades, to kind of get those into better habits going forward?
You know, right now, we evacuate our buildings, fire drills, once per month that we have 10 school days within. We're drilling required by the state to drill, secures, lockdowns, shelters, two times per year. So we do it once per semester, and I can definitely see them adding to legislation that they have requirements similar to what we do with evacuations to continue to drill and make sure our kids would respond, our teachers would respond appropriately when we do that. Whether or not, it's arguable whether or not two times a year is good enough to put our people in good shape, and so I can see them expanding those requirements.
I mean, I had some good experiences when we went to a credit section. We've had the opportunity to see what the process is to go into a school. That's very reassuring, so I appreciate-- We also have a chance to talk to other school districts--
To see what they're seeing and what they're doing. And it seems like we've checked every box. I like the fact that you said that there's still more work to do.
Absolutely.
And that's good, because whatever measures you have, somebody's always going to try to find a way around them. So we have to stay alert, make sure that we have controls for that.
Yes, sir.
So, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Morris, we'll hear from you shortly.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is a report under Special Populations, and Dr. Stacy Carpenter, welcome.
Hello. Well, I am excited to share all of the great things going on in Special Ed with you tonight and looking forward to hearing your input. So MISD believes in cultivating a culture and creating a sense of belonging and empathy. The vision for the SPED department is open-heart, helping hand. In the pursuit of excellence, we aim to help students and their parents feel like they belong. We collaborate with paraprofessionals, teachers, and administrators to foster empathy and provide appropriate services for our families. First, I want to celebrate my team of coordinators and the new director. We have been on a crazy adventure the last year and a half. With three new SPED coordinators, we started our adventure this summer with a retreat to set goals for the upcoming year, continue with leadership development, and of course, have a little fun. We are over 1,150 employees strong, devoted to providing specialized instruction and related services to the students 0 to 21 that have a disability. We work in and with all MISD campuses, departments, and outside organizations. We are committed to the community and give our families opportunities to participate in events like Signing Santa and Special Olympics. We offer six parent education training sessions and a weekly parent session for our 400 AU students. We had a lot to celebrate last year, first being results-driven accountability. We moved from a determination level three to one based on star results and a reduction in discipline. We held all of the required House Bill 4545 arcs last year and met the CELO requirements where each deaf and hard-of-hearing student ages 0 to 8 have to be now tested annually. We stayed off a significant disproportionality for discipline, and I'll talk more about the other celebrations as the presentation goes forward. First and foremost, I want to celebrate our 22 students in our transition program that is housed at the Student Support Center. The major focus of the program is to prepare students for jobs and life outside of school. The transition specialists, teachers, and paraprofessionals are inspiring. We tour MISD buildings and train students for employment. Our students move on to work at the Credit Union of Texas, Passato's, Marshall's, Plato's Closet, Hampton Inn, Pizza Inn, McAllister, Walgreens, TJ Maxx, and of course, our very own MISD. The transition program is committed to the community and volunteers at the Hampton Inn, Mills on Will's, Calloway's Nursery, Buckner International, and the Mesquite Library. We were named Sharing Life Partner of the Year. Did you all know that the Student Support Center has its own independent warehouse now? The idea came about through Megan, our secretary. She was speaking with another secretary in the district, and I am super proud that they were innovating and felt confident enough in the culture of MISD to come and ask to make this go forward. We train the students, the transition students, on deliveries, stocking, pulling orders, and getting items to campuses. We just hired our very first student worker, and that student will be paid through a partnership with the Texas Workforce Commission and IDEA B funds. We believe that MISD employees are a passionate learning family committed to professional growth. Over beyond our typical professional learning we provide for administrators, new and all teachers, we provide training for bus drivers and monitors, and crisis prevention, safety, and how to help our students with the most significant disabilities. Coming from the ED-- Coming from the EDLD row, I felt it was important to build a coaching culture at the SSC and provide targeted leadership development to the director and seven coordinators who help principals and assistant principals across the district. Over 80 hours have been invested to grow the coordinators this semester, who in turn are meeting and growing their direct reports. Since multiple coordinators are at retirement age, we are creating a pipeline of leaders through leadership development and stretch projects aligned with our Holdsworth work. One of the major takeaways last year was that I needed to improve the system we had for our low incidence disabilities classes like life skills, TLC, and our pass units. I want MISD to have the most supported SPED teachers in the state of Texas. We have 29 new teachers in these roles and we needed to help principals grow and develop these teachers to work with our most specialized populations. We shifted responsibilities of behavior and instructional specialists to working with these teachers to help campuses with retention. Over 410 classroom visits have been made so far this year to embed onsite, real-time coaching. This was a significant change of eyes on monitoring and coaching added on top of these people's normal responsibilities. I am proud of this endeavor. Each year, the SPED department is required to complete a self-assessment for TEA. Over the last two years, we were asked to complete nine categories. We went ahead and completed seven additional categories to prepare for TEA's visit that is coming in January 2024. Different district committees comprised of central office staff, parents, and teachers looked over evidence and the impact to make determinations. Of the 23 categories, seven were exemplary, eight were proficient, and one was developed. The other seven will be rated this year and we will make improvements based on those ratings. So did you know that SPED absorbed dyslexia starting in October of last year? Did y'all know that? All right. We are 9,468 students strong. The department almost doubled. While the majority of dyslexia students still receive services through 504, we are still responsible for those services. Within four years, we believe a majority of the students identified as dyslexic will be receiving services through special education. Each kindergartner and first grader receives a screening now for dyslexia and we push for it to go through the FIE. This early identification, coupled with three hours a week of multisensory therapy, will help with our K3 literacy initiative. Now, with that, we are experiencing massive growth. While dyslexia is a main cause for the increase since last October, the trend started once the feds found out that TEA was negligent and child fine due to the 8.5% cap from years ago. Mesquite was always over the 8.5% cap and we were up to 12% at the beginning of August of last year. Currently, we are sitting at 15%. There were 1,413 more SPED students since August of 2021. To put this in context, that would be every single student in a school between the size of Vanguard and Potte. So let's look into the future. As we plan for it, SPED will face significant challenges in the upcoming years as a result of the growth. This is not unique to Mesquite ISD. All of the trainings, TEA webinars, Region 10 meetings, we attend center around SPED growth and dyslexia. Texas overall has increased 24% in the population this year. Marble Falls is currently sitting at 20%. Conroe has had 2,630 cents referrals since last year. Katy has had 1,388 referrals since the beginning of this year. If you look at our middle schools, all of them are right on track with our district average with three being above the district average. Those kids will soon be in high school and you will see the growth in high school. The biggest impact is that 18 of our elementary schools since we started identifying dyslexia and SPED are at 20% or more special ed. 19 of our elementary schools are between 15 and 19%, and only six elementary schools are below the 15% district average. Our challenge is as we grow, the teacher shortage increases. Certification issues are also a concern because SPED teachers need both content and the SPED certification. So we faced two major challenges last year, dyslexia and the impact the growth would have on our elementaries. We asked ourselves, how are we going to handle this growth? How are we going to meet the needs of the students and ensure that they get the services they deserve? The way we tackled that challenge was through our tactical team. Elementary numbers are now as large as our middle school numbers and they have full-time ARDS chairs. We were not going to be able to find 30-plus elementary SPED certified teachers, nor do we have the budget possibly to do that. The one thing that we could take away from the current teachers at those elementary campuses and other campuses was paperwork. So the tactical team was necessary. Each student must have an annual ARD and each ARD is about 40 pages. If you added all of the annual ARDS needed for elementary school, it would take 8,613 hours to complete the paperwork preparation. That equates to 1,376 full work dates. That is seven full-time teachers alone. Using the same methodology, middle schools and high schools, just paperwork prep, we could save three teachers each. That is a total of 13 teachers during a national teacher shortage that we were able to save by outsourcing paperwork. In actuality, though, we held over 9,000 ARD meetings and not all of them were annuals. Once we added House Bill 4545, CELEA legislation requirements, manifestation determinations, reevaluations, initial evaluations, minute changes for elementary schools, we added over 3,625 meetings to our campuses. Had the tech team not prepped all of the House Bill 4545 ARDS at the end of last year to help our campuses, it would have been extraordinarily difficult to get that complete. So what are the costs for this? An annual ARD start to finish is roughly five to five and a half hours for the scheduling, the paperwork, and holding the actual meeting. Each annual ARD meeting lasts an hour to an hour and a half. It takes three hours to send the three required notices, complete the paperwork, and go back and archive the meetings. So I took out my calculator and determined what would the highest number of ARDs we have had, plus the prep hours, and we would be looking at close to $1 million to outsource To add more teachers would have actually cost over $2 million. To use a contract company at $60 an hour, it would have been $1.6 million. Currently, we have spent $331,000 through December of this year for the tech team. So I think we saved some money. Along with the teacher shortage, we are facing shortages in all areas of special education, specifically related service providers. Diagnosticians, speech therapists, audiologists, occupational and physical therapists are all difficult to find. We're trying to develop interest by partnering with CTE and Ready Set Teach programs to show our students different paths in education. My next goal is to develop a pipeline with our American Sign Language classes so our students can graduate with certifications and possibly start straight to work in our own district. If they can become interpreters, we can possibly support them along the way to become deaf education teachers. So here's another big stat for you. Only 200 deaf education teachers graduated nationwide last year and Mesquite ISD needed seven of those. So for the interest of time, I have such an amazing video, but I will get that to you in an email that shows more about the warehouse, tech team members, partnership with one of our CTE programs and our child development classes, and an amazing, heartwarming story about one of our students and the amazing work from the teachers. Thank you. Have any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Carpenter. Anybody have any questions?
All right. All right.
Appreciate the good job you do for us. Thanks so much. Next item on the agenda. Next item on the agenda is under Administration. It's under Discussion of District-Wide Intruder Detection Audit Report Findings. We'll hear from Mr. Morris again.
As most of you know, and I mentioned it in the effectiveness report a few minutes ago, Region 10, in conjunction with the Texas School Safety Center, has been conducting random intruder audits in Texas. I don't know off the top of my head how many we have done so far, but 53 campuses that will receive the audit. We're around the 20 mark at this point, so about halfway done, which makes a lot of sense. They wanted to get to 75% of the schools in the state of Texas, 100% of the districts, but 75% of the schools by the end of the school year. So we're on pace to be there. We actually had a couple done already today. We had some last week. But just a reminder that anytime there's findings, they're looking for a variety of things. They're trying to get into buildings if they can get into buildings. If they can't get into buildings, they come in the front door, they walk with an administrator around the entire building to check exterior doors, to look and make sure they're functioning properly, that nothing's unlocked. And then they walk in inside the building and they check some of our classroom doors. We're one of the districts that have asked our classrooms to be locked and shut. You know, Mr. Rose asked earlier if there were other things. There is some conversation already about a future that it would be a requirement for the state of Texas for that to be the case, that we keep our classroom doors locked and shut during instruction. And so we're ahead of the game if they do do that. But that's another thing that they check and they look into. And anytime they have findings, we report that to you all, we report that to the School Safety Committee, and we address those and have corrective action plans. So this is not an action item, but it's just for discussion. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is an action item to approve the COVID leave update. Mr. Hasso.
Yes, sir. Dr. Vera, board, good evening. We appreciate just a little bit of time this evening to revisit a very important topic, that being COVID leave for our staff. I stood before you in August and we assessed the conditions at that point and the decision was made to continue. And so this evening, during our presentation, we'll review the current COVID leave, where we left off with that, the current COVID conditions, both for our district and our county. And then we'll bring a recommendation for board action this evening. So with that being said, just very quickly, you can see before you the history of COVID leave in 2020. The federal mandate, which is Families First Coronavirus Response Act, was put in place. Just very quickly going down that timeline, in January 2021, the board approves COVID-19 resolution, so you extended the COVID leave after the federal funds had expired. In 2122, you had a resolution that extended the COVID leave for employees at that point. And then, as we just referred to a second ago, earlier this fall, I believe it was August, we stood before you and recommended that the COVID leave be extended and you did take action at that point. What you have in front of you now is the actual COVID leave that you approved going forward for the fall semester. We won't go into depth with all of the bullet points, but we will call your attention to the bottom two bullet points. They have some yellow highlights. And so appropriate leave request form should be completed in ed euphoria. A maximum of three days can be used. That was a difference in the policy or in the protocol this year as opposed to previous years. I believe that had been 10 previously when we first. And we follow the mandates from the CDC and guidance from Dallas County and those types of things. And then a final bullet point, which is the key reason that we're here tonight, effective August 8, 2022, through the end of the fall semester, the process will be reviewed to determine the status for the spring. And so now is the time that we're going to determine whether we should continue in the spring. If you look in front of you, the slide that you have, on the left-hand side, that was the Dallas County risk level for COVID on August 5, 2022. That was in the days leading up to that recommendation during August. You can see that the condition was orange, which is extreme caution. Then as you move across to the right, December 11, which was, I guess, this weekend, yesterday, we see that the risk level is now yellow, which is proceed carefully. So thank goodness that we seem to be showing some progress towards being able to maybe return to more normal activities as we continue to go along. We certainly acknowledge that we're not out of the pandemic and out of danger officially, but there is some reason for hope and optimism. Some things that we need to bear in mind, some other adjustments that we made along the way that relate specifically to the risk levels that Dallas County puts out. The higher the risk level or the higher the color, I guess, that means that we do more electrostatic spraying at our campuses each night. Because we've moved from the red, I guess, which would be at the far extreme left, more towards the other end of that spectrum, we had scaled back some of that electrostatic spraying, but we are flexible enough that if we see a spike, then we continue to spray at more frequent intervals. And then, of course, our HVAC units have the bipolar ionization, I believe. That's still in place. I went a little, I had to dig into long-term memory for that one. Please feel free to stop me anywhere along the way that you need information. And then finally, some other factors to consider. On the left here, you see the current COVID positive test protocols. This is what we ask our students and staff to follow in cases where they test positive. Because remember, we just said although we're seeing movement in the right direction as far as the pandemic, we're not completely out of the woods. And so those are our protocols right now. And then on the right, you see the CDC COVID level for Dallas County and it is green, which the good news is it's considered low. So again, movement in the right direction. So what has it been like as far as COVID leave in the district? So you have the table in front of you. It goes from August at the top end of that table down to December. The middle column is for Fall 2022 and the right column is Fall 2021. And so in oversimplified terms, we see an inverse proportion there. Thank goodness that for this school year, we started off pretty hot. 195 COVID leaves were granted that first month back. Then we see a gradual decline, 114, then a huge decline in October to 20, holding steady in November for 19, and so far in December, we have nine to date. So again, lots of reason for hope and optimism. Just for your information, last fall, and you see again the totals there on the far-right column, last fall, we had a total of 1,071 leaves that were approved so far. This fall, we have 357. So definitely marked improvement in our data. So with all of that being said, our recommendation for the board to consider is that we extend the staff COVID leave through June 30, 2022, which would mark the end of the contract year for all 226 or year-round employees. Although we are seeing movement in the right direction, you see by the numbers or the decreased numbers, we still have staff who are getting ill and we feel like this is the appropriate strategy to move forward so that they can see that we have them in our plans and try to do the right thing for them. So at this point, the other thing that I would say that based on everything that we see, the information from the CDC, Dallas County, our own data, collaboration with our Health Services Department, Ms. Dossie, was fully in favor of extending the leave through the end of the school year, the contract year. At that point, our plan would be that there wouldn't be further scheduled discussion. It would just expire. Of course, the board reserves the right to reconsider this at any point. I'd be glad to entertain any questions that you have.
So this will continue through June of '23?
'22.
Okay.
Oh, '23, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, yeah. My apologies.
Yeah.
You know, I'm busy packing a little bit, so maybe I... So my apologies for that. Yes, sir. Thank you for catching that. It's 2023, yes.
Anybody have any questions? We have a motion by Mr. Carbo and a second by Ms. Collier to approve the COVID leave update. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir. We will make that revision accordingly and get that passed along.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hasso. Next item on the agenda is, under instruction, we'll hear a report from Ms. Donna Maketa on the overview of accountability refresh and the new framework.
That's correct. I will say that this is really two reports in one, so for my timer's purposes, you got it. We're really doing two reports here. So we can't really talk about accountability refresh without talking about STAR redesign. So we want to talk about that first. That's going to be our first report. So what is STAR redesign and why? STAR redesign was a result of House Bill 3906 back in 2019, which seems like a really long time ago, but that's when it was first established. And it said that this redesign would be implemented in 2223, which is this year. STAR redesign had four parts to it. The first part is all about online assessment, and it said that by 2023, all STAR would be online. That's not new for us. That's not a concern for us. Last year, 99% of our students tested online, and we've been doing that for several years. The other part that it talked about was cross-curricular passages to improve reading comprehension for students. That started last year. We saw reading scores go up across the state and our reading scores as well. So I think that's a very positive thing for students. That relates to the research I showed you in the Assessment Effectiveness Report, that comprehension improves both in high-reading skill students and struggling reading skill students, if they understand the background knowledge to what they're reading. So that's a very important piece, and will benefit our students a lot in the long run. The other two parts are a little, maybe, more problematic. We'll talk about those briefly. The one says that writing will be incorporated in all RLA tests. Do you recall, we've had fourth and seventh grade writing until last year, and last year we had no writing? So now all RLA reading tests will have a writing component. It also talked about new item types, and new item types are something that we've been incorporating in our district checkpoints since last year, once the state kind of defined what those were. And so we want to kind of take a look at some of those real quickly. These are much more interactive for our students. You'll notice that there's 14 new item types. 10 of them are in math, and they scan all of the different core subject areas. So I may have a number line that I actually manipulate on this test online. I may actually identify picture points. I can do graphics on the test now. All of those things make the test more interactive for students and lend themselves more to what's going on in the classroom. However, if you look at the bottom five or so, there'll be new questions that are multi-part, which means that I have two answers. I'll be asked a question, I answer that question, and then I need to maybe provide text evidence from the reading passage I just read. Another one is that you can select more than one correct answer, which is probably foreign to all of us, because correct answers are what we were raised with, right? But there are really more than one correct answer on a test, and so, or two questions. And so they'll test that. It's the last two that I really kind of want to look at in particular. This is that writing piece that we talked about. There's a short constructed response, and there's an extended constructed response. So your short constructed response, it's based on a two-point question, and students will write their answer to that question. It's 475-character limit there, so you can kind of see what that is compared to the extended constructed response. The extended constructed response is like fourth and seventh grade writing. It's a composition, except the difference is that now students will read a passage, have the background knowledge, and then write to that, as opposed to having a cold prompt like they used to on the fourth and seventh grade tests. Three through eight, yes, ma'am. English 1 and English 2 have already had the writing component. You know, 50% of the EOC English 1 and English 2 are writing, and the other 50% is reading. This will not be 50%, but it will be done on a five-point rubric. But there are two graders, which means that the constructed extended response will be worth 10 points. And it has a 2,300-character limit, so you can see it's considerably longer than the short constructed response. So that's the first report, so you can start the timer again. Are there any questions? Are there any questions on the new item types or the redesign of STAR? It's important for you to have that piece as we go into the accountability piece, because STAR is all about accountability, right? Our accountability is all about STAR, let's put it that way. So ours, our accountability that we're currently have, was established in 2017, and it was supposed to be reviewed every three years, but because of COVID, it ended up being five years, which is this year. So I want to talk a little bit about state accountability for campuses and what has and has not changed. And I want you to pay attention that we're talking about campuses only until we get to the end, because the district accountability has changed significantly. So there are still three domains, and student achievement is the first one, so let's talk about it first. It's 100% STAR, the new STAR this year. It's 100% STAR, the new STAR this year, for both elementary and middle school. For high school, it's 40% STAR. 40% CCMR, which we talk about in our effectiveness report each year, and then 20% graduation. None of this has changed. That structure is still the same. The fact that if you get a 60 in your overall STAR component, you get an A, has not changed. Here's the big change with domain one. CCMR cut point for an A has moved from 60 to 88. That's a percentage, 60% to 88%. And let me explain why. When the accountability system was established in 2017, the average CCMR rate across the state was 47%. So it makes sense that 60 could be an A, because an average would be C, right? Last year, the average for CCMR across the state was 65%. So it was five points above the A. So that had to be relooked at. I think that's a credit. I think that's a credit to our campuses and all the things they've done in CCMR, that we've moved 20 points, basically, in those years. So now it will be 88%. The problem is, if you look at the other little yellow line up there, is that CCMR is a lagging indicator and was established on the class of 2022. So you can't change it for this year at all. Our campuses are used to having high Bs and low As for CCMR. We'll see a lot more Cs in CCMR and accountability for this year, as we move forward with that. This is really all based on the state's 60-30 goal, which I'm sure you're familiar with, that by 2030, 60% of the workforce across the state of Texas will either have a college degree or have some type of workforce certification. So they say that by setting it at 88, that they should be able to reach this by 2030. We have some unknowns in this, even though the structure of the domain is the same. We don't know our cut points for graduation rate. Those have been going up steadily over five years. We don't know the cut points for the B, C, D, and F for STAR CCMR. We just know those two A cut points. Any questions on domain one? Okay. Domain two, same type of structure that it's had in the past. It has relative performance based on domain one achievement plus the percent of your economically disadvantaged. This is the domain where the state attempts to equalize your districts that have low socioeconomic students and districts that have high socioeconomic students. Elementary and middle school, still 100% STAR, but now high school changes to 50% STAR and 50% CCMR. So there's CCMR raising its little head again there in domain two. The second part of domain two is academic growth. It's reading and math only. This has not changed. It begins in fourth grade, because you have to have a test in third grade before you can show growth in fourth grade, or so on and so forth. We still get 0.5 or 1 points, depending on the amount of growth, but it will be figured a little bit differently. I'm not going into that, but know that the point system is the same. We do have additional groups that will come in, and there's some positives in this group. We've never had growth for our EOC retesters before, so I think that will be a positive thing. And we've never had growth from eighth-grade reading to English 1, because English 1 was 50% writing, but now we'll have more writing in the eighth-grade readings, so we will have that as well. Another piece, a new piece, is that nonpasser to passer will be an extra point in growth. Those are our 45 kids that we talk about all the time. So the state wanted to put that in domain three, but the federal government said no, so they just put it in domain two. So they just shoved them, didn't they? The unknowns have to do with the cut points again. We won't know those till January of '23. Now, domain one, or relative performance, or academic growth, counts as 70% of accountability for campuses. Is there any question on domain two? Okay, that's 70% state accountability. Let's talk about federal accountability for campuses. This is all domain three, and this is about closing the gap for student groups. It's still reading and math at the Meets level or above on STAR, the new STAR. It's still all about growth in reading and math. It's still all about CCMR. Graduation, but it's four-year only instead of four, five, or six. And then your STAR achievement, which is all of the different STAR tests from domain one. And then tellpass is the new piece that we pick up in the federal accountability. So our 70% state plus 30% federal will equal campus accountability. That's not new. But let's take a closer look at domain three, and the only way I could figure out how to show you that is visually. So this is what the old domain three used to look like. You had to have a minimum of 25 tests in each target group in order for that group to count. And they would give you a target, and then your data was reflected against that target. So it was a yes or no. You see, it was all students, all the ethnic groups, the economically disadvantaged, your ELs, your special ed current and former continuously and non-continuously enrolled. Okay? So all those ins and yeses say, did you meet the target? Did you not meet the target? Those are not percentages of scores. Those are the targets that had to be met, okay? And there were 71 possible targets that had to be met. That was the old federal accountability. Here's the new federal accountability. Looks a little different, doesn't it? But it's similar, because you still have all students, but instead of having every ethnic group, they're going to look at the two lowest ethnic groups from the year before. So this school might have their lowest ethnic groups. It's white and Asian. That's what this shows. Another school might have their two lowest ethnic groups, is Hispanic and African-American. Another one may have white and African-American. So every school could have, well, they can't all, because there's only so many groups, but you get the picture that it will be different for different groups. I see frowns. Yes, ma'am.
So if that's the case, and I mean, you're targeting those kids to like scaffold their stuff, do you cool and say, okay, this group, this group?
And what? It's different by each campus?
Well, it's different for the accountability groups, the ethnic groups that will show up in your domain three accountability. All the others are in all students. They're also in some other groups, so let's talk about the other groups real quickly. Instead of having all those different groups, now they're going to have what they call a supergroup. The supergroup includes all your economically disadvantaged students, all your sped students. It includes your bilingual students or EL students, and it includes what they call highly mobile students. Each student that is in there will only count one time. So I could be an economically disadvantaged student. That's an EB, an emergent bilingual that's also sped, but I only count one time in that group. The reason they've done this is because if I'm a small school, remember you had to have 25 minimum for a group to count? Now you have to have 10 minimum, but some schools wouldn't even have 10 minimum in certain groups. So they wanted all the students to have the potential to count, so they've created the supergroup. The highly mobile group is your homeless, your foster, and your migrant students. We've never looked at those in regular accountability. We look at those in results-driven accountability, which is a whole nother accountability system. But now they will be in this particular group. There are no targets on here. There will be targets on here, but they've not been set yet. And instead of it being a yes/no kind of thing, you hit the target or you didn't hit the target, it will now be, if you didn't make improvement over last year, you'll get a zero. If you hit the target, you get a four. If you're somewhere in between, you can get a one, two, or a three, depending on how close you are to the target. Pardon me? Then we'll give you some credit. Are you moving toward the targets, what it's asking? Well, we will know in January of 2023. And they'll be set for five years, once they set them. But they will change in five years. Five years. We also have, you see, we have our special ed former, and we have our continuously enrolled that actually count down in the bottom part there, where it talks about CCMR or STAR domain. So it's different.
Mad props for figuring this out, too. That's crazy.
If you look to the right, you'll see that elementary and middle school have different percentages that it counts, and this was true in the old system, not just the new system. So growth counts 50% for elementary and middle school, where the Meets level on STAR counts 30%. If you go over to high school, the Meets level on STAR counts 50% and CCMR accounts 30%. So that's always different. They figure those points, they add those up, and that becomes your domain three score, your federal accountability score. What? How do you know if you want? Once they set the cut scores, then we'll know what it takes to win.
Okay.
But they haven't set those yet, so that'll be January. You know, I like the trophy. The positive thing is, how many possible targets were on the other one?
Seventy-one.
Seventy-one. How many is on this one? Twenty-three. I think that's a positive thing, but we'll see how it plays whenever we actually get there. Okay? Any questions on campus accountability?
You can afford your job.
Pardon me? I'm sorry.
That's a nice idea.
Okay. So now let's look at district accountability. It's very different. That, what I just showed you, is not so very different, other than the way they're figuring domain three and the new cut scores that we'll have. But district accountability is different, so let's look at this. The old district accountability. The old district accountability was 40% STAR, 40% CCMR, and 20% graduation, just like high schools. So high schools really had 60% of district accountability. Well, that is changing. So let's see how it's changing. Notice this says that this is a reset proposed methodology. That's just because it's on this slide that I used. What the state now says is that accountability is set in wet cement and that when we get our manual in the spring, then the cement hardens. But right now, I think this is more than wet cement, based on everything that we know. So it's all based on the number of students that the district has in grades three through 12 and how that is proportionate to each campus. So let's look at campus one here. Well, first, let's look at the bottom. This particular little district has, and this is a little district, 2,417 students, okay? And their campus one has 334 of those in grades three through 12. So they determine what the weight is for that campus. How much do they contribute to the district accountability? Campus two, they figure out how much they contribute to district accountability based on the number of students they have. Are we good with that? Okay. Because that's an important piece, those weights over there. Every campus will have a different weight. And in looking at our campuses, Horn High School is the largest campus, and it will have the most weight in the district. And then all your high schools will be there because they have more students. The first middle school that will have the most weight will be Kimbrough. It'll go all the way down to Berry. Each one of them will have a different amount of weight that goes into the district accountability. When you get to elementary, it's Augziger, then Henry, and it just keeps going down until it gets to Lawrence, Motley, Kimball. Those are the three smallest schools. Okay? We good with that? Okay. So then they take that weight, and they determine how many points that campus is contributing to the district accountability. And they're going to do that in all of those domains. Domain one, achievement. The two pieces of domain two, that growth and that relative performance, and then also for domain three, the federal. So they'll figure that four times on every campus. They'll take what the overall domain score is. For, say, campus one, their overall domain one score was 85. They had a 13.8% rate, and so they figure those points that will figure into district accountability. Okay? Yep, okay. And then they'll add up all those points, and that will be the district domain rating for whatever domain it is that's been figured. Okay? Okay. So now we're going to put it all together, and now it goes back to the way it used to be because we always got four different scores. Achievement, the school progress AB, and the closing the gap. That's that first column, scale scores. We always got those. And then they looked at, well, what was the highest in school progress? And they moved that one forward. And then they would say, well, is that one higher or lower than student achievement? Well, student achievement's higher, so they moved that one forward. That becomes 70% of the district accountability, and they figure those weighted points based on that. And if you figure 70% of 89, then it's 62.3. When you go down to your closing the gap one, remember, it's worth 30%. So 30% of 81 is 24.3. You add those two together, and you get your overall 87 grade. Okay?
Is that our story?
What?
Is that our story?
It was our story last year, wasn't it? We'll hope it's that story again this year. Yes.
It sounded familiar.
It sounded familiar, right?
Do you think we're on track? Or are we insane?
Well, I want you to remember that we have a new design STAR test, and I think that based on our district checkpoints, some of those questions are more difficult for students. So I think that could affect it. I think that the CCMR piece, you know, going to 88 will affect it. So I would like to say we're there, but I think it's like everything else. You know, you start this climb, and then you put in something new, and you have what's called an implementation dip before you start that climb again. So we'll see if we have that this year or not.
So there's an inherent prejudice against large schools? Then maybe you're larger district.
Why do you say that?
The waiting. The waiting per campus.
The waiting per campus?
As far as the population of each campus and how much it, like Horn.
It'll weigh the most. I can't say it's predominant, but it will weigh the most of any school that we have. Really, they did this because the way it was set up, and it was so much based on high school, that you would have a district that had a good rating, but they would have failing schools underneath them.
Okay.
That was never us.
Right.
We were always, our schools were C or better, you know, and the district was a B. So that's why they really looked for a different method to be able to not have that inequity, I guess, if that helps. So let's recap just a moment. STAR is changing with new item types, writing in all the reading part. CCMR A is now 88% as opposed to 60. Federal accountability, domain three's narrowing the focus on what's looked at in that particular domain. Of course, everything's looked at in the other domains. And then district accountability will be based on three through 12 student enrollment to determine weight by campus. Questions?
We had a lot of targets for CC and Harvard. We knocked that apart. Where were we?
We were about 60% last year because, remember, it changed. They took some of the things out. We were 65 the year before, and then when they took out some of those pieces, we went to 60. For next year, we're about 65% overall. Remember, it's a lagging indicator, so we already know that.
This will be the case for all districts, all public school districts in the state of Texas.
In all charters.
Based on all of this that you've shown, I can see where a district that was rated A last year will be a B under this new system and so on.
It could be. It could be. And there are some districts, like we talked about earlier, that were doing better because 60% was hinged on their high schools. They may do worse because now all those campuses, other campuses, will count more too. We'll just see how it all plays. The state will be releasing, I think it's in February, they'll take last year's data, try to kate it like this, and release it so we'll have a kind of a look, a better look at that.
So that would be the benchmark for where we're looking at it?
From last year's data? The only difference with last year's data and this year's data will be STAR redesign. So I can't say that absolutely yes. You know, I can just say that's how it lays out based on the new system, but you have to figure in STAR redesign.
Okay, any other questions?
It's just hard not to think of this, is when public schools as a whole tend to improve, they figure out a way to change the game.
Amen.
And that's what's sad.
Literally, they have, like every five years.
We adapt and we do better, and then, well, they're doing so much better, let's just change the rule.
Yeah.
Yeah, once we figure it out, really.
We figure it out, but it's okay because we always keep progressing, and that's the point.
And that's of a benefit to our students, that we keep progressing like that.
We keep progressing.
And it's all about the kids, isn't it? So.
We must keep bringing the challenge.
We'll figure it out. Bring it on. Our kids will do it, right? Bring it on.
Hey. Okay, thank you, Donna. Appreciate all the information. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Next item on the agenda is under construction. Sorry I had to make you guys wait so long, but everybody waited. It's an action item to approve the guaranteed maximum price, number one, for the Horn. Looks like we have Jay and Graham here.
Dr. Rivera, board, good evening. We are here tonight to ask approval for the guaranteed maximum price, number one, for the Horn High School addition in the amount of $6,646 and $274. Upon approval, we will be able to order the items that we need that we have learned the past few years that are long-lead items, such as structural steel, electrical panels, HVAC, mechanical equipment, and roofing material. The construction costs at the 90% plans at this time are on budget. So I have Graham Bowman, WRA, and Tommy Freely with Poe Construction with me tonight, and we can answer any questions that y'all may have.
So this is basically the first check. This is the pre-order of stuff we need to get a word now.
Yes, sir.
Steel, diesel.
Yes. Yes.
I like the plan of getting ahead of it.
It seems like we do that through the whole project, but these are the main items that seem to hold us up, so.
Move to approve in a second.
Yes.
We have a motion by Mr. Bingham and a second by Mr. Rose to approve GMP number one for the Horn High School addition. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you, Jay. Thank you, Graham. Next item on the agenda is under business. It's an action item to approve the budget amendment.
Good evening, President Everett, board members. Dr. Rivera, before you have a budget amendment for your consideration to fund the additional monies needed to complete the auditorium, you approve the resolution to move forward in November. So we're just adding the dollars associated moving forward. We'll try to put them together. And so that is for your consideration, and it will impact the fund balance by $5 million.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Mr. Seward and a second by Mr. Carbo to approve the budget amendment. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Prado. At this time, the board will move into closed meeting under authority of Texas Government Code, Section 551.074 under personnel. We have a little bit of unfinished business to discuss. No item will be, there will be no action taken until we return, but the time is now 8:34 PM that we're going into closed meeting. The time is now 8:50 PM, and we will reconvene in open meeting from closed session. No action will be taken at this time. If there's no other discussion or anything else that's on the agenda, this meeting is adjourned.